All right, let's gavel it in, let's get started. Greetings, this is the regular city council meeting for Monday, November 15th, 2021. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, sorry, I forgot about that. Do that every time. Thank you, may be seated. Get ahead of myself sometime, I can't forget that prayer. All right, welcome everybody, always good to see a full house. Let's start with the public hearing, the planning commission chairman, Chris Leonard. Take it away, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight we have two public hearings, we will do them in kind of one session. The first is a public hearing on proposed revisions to the subdivision and land development code, section 1202.2, to include riparian buffer requirements and to amend section 1306 regarding open space requirements. And Susan Britt will provide us with a brief report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mayor, and Council. Recommendations regarding potential amendments to stormwater regulations in the subdivision and land development code were presented to the council in September. As a result of discussion at that meeting, staff is proposing amendments to the subdivision and land development code, section 1202.2, to include riparian buffer requirements and to amend section 1306 regarding open space requirements. Please note that the draft that was in your packet still includes the 20% for business open space, but per the council comments at the September meeting, this was supposed to remain at the current 25%. And just make sure that that is noted in any recommendation and that we will change that in the final document. Riparian buffers, for those of you who are not sure what that means, riparian means the land associated with wet streams, watercourses. It's not a stream buffer because stream refers to the water. Riparian refers to the land that contains certain types of plants and is sometimes prone to flooding. So that's why it's called riparian rather than stream buffer. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Are there any, is there anyone signed up on the list who wants to have a public comment about that? There is somebody? Go on forward and state your name and address.
I'm Mark Pronzinski, I'm at 564 Placid Court. I'm here to request that council include the planning commission's recommendation or reconsider the planning commission's recommendation to change the design criteria for new redevelopment stormwater construction to a 20-year standard. The current standard used by Tugakay is 10 years. My neighbors and I have watched Nivens Creek fill in with sediment due to past insufficient controls of stormwater, which resulted in sedimentation and excessive erosion of the creek bed. The most recent impact on Nivens Creek was the Trinity Towns development. The project had numerous work stoppages, as you know, to address stormwater issues. The damage has resulted to the tributary dropping a large amount of sediment into Nivens Creek. Council directed the planning commission to study stormwater protection for new developments. The sedimentation of Nivens Creek was one of the factors to explore recommendations for stormwater protections. We agree with the recommendations for developers to include riparian buffer and open green space for new developments. These recommendations will benefit the city with less density, retain green space that would normally disappear once a development starts and will also help with stormwater control. We don't agree with the recommendation by the city staff to continue to use the 10-year storm standard for stormwater construction and redevelopment. While the 10-year standard is not the minimum allowed by South Carolina DHEC, it is certainly not sufficient for what we see happening in Nivens Creek and most of the creeks around Lake Wiley and Tugakay. The topography of Tugakay and the surrounding areas create a challenge to control stormwater runoff. The better solution is the 20-year standard. Let me repeat, we feel the challenging topography of Tugakay warrants a higher standard to control stormwater, both during development and post-development. The reasoning that the 20-year standard should be adopted is that more stormwater that is controlled and contained, the less the amount of sediment that gets moved into creeks and watershed and ultimately into the lake. One potential downside mentioned in the report was higher development cost. I really don't think that this is a significant factor. The evidence is Trinity Point, is the Trinity Project. Original price tags were to be 300,000. The development can't build them fast enough and the price tags are approaching 400-plus thousand dollars. The demand to live in Tugakay is, will pay for this. It's not coming out of the city's pocket. This 20-year standard should be applied to the construction holding ponds, not just the stormwater system. There is a greater threat during construction development to see an increase in sedimentation due to the increase of runoff. In the five years that I've lived in Tugakay... Continue.
Yep.
In the five years that I've lived in Tugakay, the tributaries that lead into Nivens Creek turn a reddish chocolate milk color when development and construction is taking place along the tributaries.
All right, thank you, Mark. Is there anyone else who has public comments on the change to the land development code?
Chairman Leonard, if I may, just to address that one particular comment, that the items, and this is just for more public clarification, are in a, contained within a different ordinance, it's within our stormwater ordinance, not within the land development code. And I think there's still some further conversations along some of those planning commission recommendations that were actually in the stormwater development, or the stormwater ordinance. This, the ordinance 50, the land development code, also contains some recommendations from planning commission, which is being addressed this evening. So it's, it's not all just in the stormwater code. So just to address that, since it's not part of what's occurring tonight.
All right, thank you, Charlie. If there being no further comments on that, we'll close the public comment portion for item 1A. The second item is item 1B, rezoning of tax map number 654-00-00-026 from AGC in the county to PDD and the city as part of 100% annexation petition. I did neglect to say upfront that we do have a lot of people who want to make comments and so we, we will try to adhere to our three-minute time. Please make sure you keep your comments to within that three-minute period. As Mayor O'Neill said, if you're in the middle of a sentence, go ahead and feel free to finish that sentence, but after that, we're going to ask you to move on and we'll go to the next commenter. Susan Britt will again brief us on the item 1B.
Thank you. The applicant's proposing to annex and rezone approximately 52.7 acres along Dam and Gardendale Roads as a planned development district. Uses proposed within the PDD are a mix of residential uses, including single-family, detached, and attached, as well as 40,000 square feet of neighborhood-scale commercial B1. Total density permitted within the residential site would be 2.5 gross units per acre, up to a maximum, previously it was at 145. As of today, the developer has agreed to reduce this number to 138 total. There would be both detached and attached. This density per acre is very compatible to the adjacent nearby residential plan developments of both Cadence and Lakewood, which are already within the city's borders. In addition, the applicant has elected to provide a paved, multi-use trail that is a minimum eight foot wide with one foot compacted shoulders that would equal to 10 foot from the edge of the development adjacent to Gold Hill Middle School and along Gardendale Road to Gladiola Way. The subject property is identified in the 2019 update to the 2025 comprehensive plan and future land use map as containing a mix of residential, small-scale, commercial, and recreational uses that integrate flexible design standards compatible with the principles outlined in the plan. It is also generally in the location that has been identified as a future growth area in the plan. Staff believes that the annexation and rezoning is appropriate because it implements the 2025 comprehensive plan, future land use, and is located in the area identified for future growth.
Thank you, Susan. If it's okay with everybody, I'm just going to go down in order through the sign-up list. When you do get to the podium, if you would state your name and address for the record, and again, I just ask you to adhere to the three-minute comment period. So first would be Josh Patterson.
Thank you for allowing me to come to talk tonight. I just wanted to discuss the property and what it's meant to me and my family and the opportunity that y'all have given us to possibly annex it in. Back in the, in the 1920s, my great-grandfather was the dam superintendent for Duke Energy. He started piecing together pieces of property that included not only the piece up here, but also about 40-plus acres on Malachi. And I think the Irving Group approached him in the 40s about, I'm sorry, in the, in the late 60s, about an idea for a development that would be Tugakay. And he really bought into it and agreed to sell them some of the initial property on Malachi to create Tugakay. So, you know, over the years, we have enjoyed the property that we have, that we're talking about annexing tonight. And, you know, our family has hunted there and fished there and trapped there for generations. Right at 100 years now, we've owned that land. But it's, the time has come for us to sell it. We, we have to, for personal reasons, my grandmother's 93 and requires, you know, round-the-clock care. There are other things that have factored in to it, but the time has come and we felt like we've turned down a lot more money from other companies, but Shea brought us a good product. And being a Tugakay resident, I'm sorry, 1731 Lakeland Trail, you did say to start out with that. You know, they brought us a good, a good product. And living in Tugakay, it was something that I, I was really excited about. I've had the opportunity to walk my daughter to school, my son to school, through up the, up the steps to the elementary school. It's been great. I can't, I can't put a price tag on that. So thinking that we might have the opportunity to provide more trails and other things for the connectivity that Shea has agreed to put in, we were really excited about the plan. We think it's a good, a good move for Tugakay. It creates one contiguous corridor from, from beginning to end on the land that you own, plus the parks that are coming, the large park at the bottom. I think there'll be some connectivity to that as well. So I'm really excited about it. I think it's a good plan and I hope you'll consider it for annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. I think it's, is it Bryce Gandy? I got that right? Again, if you'd state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, it's Bryce Gandy, 1755 Lakeland Trail. Mayor, Council, good evening. Just want to briefly talk about the proposed land on Dam Road. I'm just a resident in Tugakay. I've lived here for, gosh, the past 10 years. I've had all three of my children here. I've seen this town grow, as we all have over, over, over time. I am aware with the development and some of the things that the developer's going to do, and it, it would do nothing but complement what our town has seen and going to see, and especially the Dam Road area, with the connectivity with trails to the new Kataba Park, the type of housing that's going to be going in. Here again, as a resident, I think that would do nothing but complement this town and other people that live here and also would like to call Tugakay their home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bryce. Next is Chris Gray.
Mayor, Council, Chris Gray, 16144 Tannaty Circle. I am asking at this time that we table this whole issue until the new council takes place. Reason being, we don't have all the information that we need at this point in time. We don't have the traffic study that we need to have, DOT. We don't have school board information that we need to have to make sure that our children have enough seats for them with this community. And we don't have the Army Corps of Engineers study done yet to see where we can build, where we can't build in the wetlands. So I think we need to have more information before we make this decision, and I would implore you to defer this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Next is Scott Shirley. Again, if you just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Scott Shirley, 16125 Tannaty Circle. Council and Planning Committee, thanks for being here and the work that you do, appreciate it. Regarding the Shea Homes development, I was present for the planning commission meeting on the first and have reviewed the PDD. The planning committee meeting on the first, it was discovered, in my view, that the developer had little and no responsibility for road improvement, connecting trails, and needed commercial development. I remember a recommendation by the developer that a mix of single-family and attached homes were recommended. I also heard planning committee member Ryan Ross asked the developer if it was possible if 100% townhomes could be built, and the developer affirmed that that was possible. I see in the PDD and the information available that the density looks like 52 townhomes now, which sounds like an improvement, but is that a requirement or a recommendation? I'm interested. I'm also going to state on the record that I think that's still too many, too many townhomes. Clearly, this land can be developed whether we're involved or not, and I respect that and respect the use of the current landowner and what they want to see it become. We know that eventually, we're going to have more homes around Tugakay, and I appreciate you wanting to have some involvement and some say in what that looks like for us. I believe we can get more out of this venture than just revenue alone. I think looking at this as just a revenue venture is somewhat myopic, so I'd ask you to consider that. Rock Hill has put a moratorium on residential development. Fort Mill has put limits on residential development. All of York County is examining the same concerns and has required a minimum of one acre lot sizes in York County for residential development. Recently, two developers approached York County Council with plans for attached residential townhomes on Route 160 and Pleasant Road. Both were denied unanimously by county council. So if everyone else is concerned about additional residential development, I think we should be too. And everyone in here that has something to say about it has good reasons to share that. I'm not saying we shouldn't annex it, and I'm not saying we shouldn't build residential development, I'm just saying we should make sure that it's well-supported and our infrastructure is handled responsibly as we move forward. The concern that the county would jump on this opportunity if we turned it down, I think is highly unlikely, considering the actions that they've taken with county land that's been available and has been offered for development. These are my concerns. No traffic study's been completed, no school density study's been completed, no wetland study's been completed, no accountability for road improvement has been mentioned so far that I know of, no accountability for connecting trails to Kataba Park. This seems pretty rushed to me. I'm concerned about property values.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Next, I think, is Amy Gamble.
Amy Gamble, 1139 Hunter's Run Drive. So I'm here tonight, I'm a native of Fort Mill, and I've been a resident of Tugakay for the last 15 years. I'm also a local real estate agent here for the last 21 years. I just want to share my perspective on annexing the Wendell property, which is what we're talking about tonight. So I've been familiar with this property for decades and, of course, just like everybody else, I've watched the land around it gradually be developed, the communities we all know, Lakewood, Cadence, Serenity Point. And I know for a fact that the owners of the property have had multiple opportunities to sell, but for various reasons, have turned it down over the years. And in fact, I know the owners personally, and I can tell you that, you know, if they, they're actually not people that I would consider to be pro-development. If they could go back in time, I think they would prefer, just like a lot of us, that we would have our quaint little small town, but that has, has left. So, you know, the truth of the matter is that that small town is gone and the development around the Wendell property is there now, whether we like it or not. So the Wendell property has basically become this singular vacant property in the midst of a full-on developed community. And it just seems to make sense that we annex that into Tugakay as it will no doubt be developed, just like everything else. So it's just a matter of, are we developing it, or are we having a say in what's being developed, or is the county doing it? Even if it's not a part of Tugakay, it's still going to put a strain on our resources and our infrastructure. And with that, we would not be reimbursed or profiting from any of the taxes or impact that, impact fees that the new development would generate. So we would basically bear an expense and have no income to offset that. Further, not annexing the property actually impedes the connectivity that so many of us actually really want. If the property's annexed, the developer has stated that they would pay for and create connectivity through trails that tie the neighboring developments together, as well as add to the continuous trails and sidewalks that connect this area of Tugakay to the peninsula and then also back to Kataba Park. That's obviously been a hot topic lately with Kataba Park not being on the peninsula. Many people have complained over the years about all the spot annexation. Annexing this property, in my opinion, would actually allow for a more contiguous, a contiguous overall community and eliminate some of that. Of course, we can't go back in time, and it seems to me that the path forward is quite clear. This property is going to be developed, whether it's a part of Tugakay or not. So in my opinion, it makes absolute sense to make it a part of Tugakay, have control over how it's developed, and reap the benefits that far outweigh the negatives, which in effect are simply growing pains that we can't stop.
Thank you, Amy. Next up is Tom Heislip.
Good evening, Tom Heislip, 11156 Turtle Bay Court, here in Tugakay, obviously. Greetings, Mr. Mayor, members of council, planning commission. I respectfully ask that you table the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to annex Wendell Farms, leave out all the nomenclature, so that you, the council, as well as the staff and the residents can obtain more information. The planned development district standards currently provides 138 units with a maximum of 52 townhomes on 52.7 acres. This equates to 2.5 dwelling units per acre. The minimum lot area per dwelling is 7,000 square feet, which is only 0.16 acre lots. In my opinion, these lots are too small and the housing is too dense. Furthermore, it does not conform with the surrounding communities of Lakewood, Serenity Point, and Cadence. Serenity Point has 1.35 dwelling units per acre. Wendell Woods is more than double in density. Lakewood has 1.86 dwelling units per acre. Wendell Woods would add almost an additional home per acre. And finally, Cadence has 2.9 dwelling units per acre, and these are patio homes, so Wendell Woods is more dense at 2.5 dwelling units per acre. I'm not opposed to annexation or this land being developed, I simply ask that you table the vote at this time so we can get more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And last on the list is Dan Dodd.
Good evening, Council. My name's Dan Dodd and I live at 310 Calming Way, just around the corner. I would like to read a statement in support of the Wendell Woods Development Project. It is my opinion that the city should annex and rezone the 52 acres along Dam Road to ensure the property is developed appropriately. City jurisdictional control is extremely important to help regulate and deliver high-quality development. If this property is left to the county control and potential county rezoning efforts, even under AGC, there's a variety of uses that would not be complementary to the city of Tugakay, including mining, poultry, landfills, et cetera. As a resident, I am in favor of the following aspects of this plan: the replacement of abandoned homes, trailers along Dam Road, and unkept property with quality home development; the addition of sidewalk connectivity and trails to the adjacent schools; high-quality landscape buffer along Dam Road; the 2.5 DUA is complementary to the associated residential uses in the donut hole between Cadence and Lakewood. I am in favor of housing choice and mix of housing types. And I do like the plan's first attempt at water quality protections in a variety of sources. I think that's very important for the city to help protect from development sedimentation into the Lake Wiley drainage basin. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. If there's no other comments on item 1B, then we will close the public comment period. Back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Turn this on. Thank you very much, you guys are adjourned. All right, while they go deliberate, let's move on. Let's move to item 2, which is a special presentation for the Arbor Day proclamation. I will read the proclamation without Tim having to come up here and get it. Arbor Day proclamation, "Whereas the city of Tugakay is celebrating 31 years as a Tree City USA which recognizes the value of trees to the community and has adopted the act of celebrating the first day, the first Friday of December as Arbor Day, and whereas trees contribute to the aesthetics of our community and when properly cared for, increase property values and beautify our neighborhoods and enhance the livability of our city through the filtering of stormwater and air pollution. Whereas it is the purpose of this proclamation on this day throughout the state of South Carolina to encourage planting trees, now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Tugakay, do hereby proclaim Friday, December 3rd, 2021, as Arbor Day in the city of Tugakay, South Carolina, and urge all residents of the city to observe Arbor Day by attending the Arbor Day celebrations on Friday, December 3rd, at 1:30 in memory of Dale Watts at Fire Station Number 2. Date of this 15th day of November, David L. O'Neill, City of Tugakay, South Carolina." Very nice for Dale. I'll leave that up there, you can get it later. All right, let's move on to item number 3, which is public comments for the council. I did not see anybody sign up. Did somebody come in late and want to say anything to the council? Seeing none, let's move on to the approval of amendments. Item number 4, council, you've read the minutes of last meeting. Is there any additions, deletions, subtractions, changes? Seeing none, hearing none, it stands as written. Let's go to item 5, committee reports. Economic Development Commission, Gus.
The EDC met on the 25th of October, there was a quorum present. The Christmas tree contest was discussed, and that's now been publicized. I know Katie's pushed several things out, so looking forward to that as a good way for businesses and private residents to have a little fun and some money be donated to charity and well. We talked about various places as to possible donate that money to. Several, we also, they also discussed that several businesses have now come into Stonecrest Professional Park on Stonecrest across from the fire station, and the businesses are actually buying those spaces, not leasing them, which is going to be, have, they'll have more skin in the game, so I think we'll have some long-term businesses there. There's another potential developer looking at Graceland or Game Off, as we call it, and also the property along Hubert Graham Road for mixed use, but mainly commercial through there just due to the topo. Discussed possible business license rebates to attract new businesses coming to town. And they also threw out an idea regarding candlelight concerts where a company comes in and matches artists with the owner of empty space and then just charges for the event. That would mainly be some of that property that's vacant on Stonecrest, and that was about it.
Any questions for Gus? Let's move on to item 5B, which is planning commission, Alicia.
All right, good evening, everyone. For our November report, I will share that our planning commission members continue to value the feedback of our neighboring jurisdictions, including York County, Fort Mill School District, and Fort Mill, et cetera. And so they continue their efforts to go out and attend those planning commission meetings and other board meetings to ensure that the planning commission is well-aware of what's happening, what's going on on their agendas, so that they can come back to... of what's happening, what's going on on their agendas, so that they can come back to our Planning Commission and inform them of what's going on, so that work continues. We spent a lot of time talking about the P D D standards for the Wendell Woods development that's before us tonight. We reviewed work to date on the community outreach requirements for new developments, and I know that this Shea Homes development has actually given us an example of something to look at, to think if this is really something that we want to do, or if there are things that we can do from a community or public outreach perspective to enhance the communication that these types of developments have with the neighboring or adjoining residents to those new developments. So, be thinking about that as Planning Commission continues to revise what they're going to present to us. They do plan to have a first draft of that ordinance recommended to us at our December meeting, so be on the lookout for that. And of course, if you have any feedback or thoughts ahead of time in terms of public engagement and what we can do to better inform folks on these new developments, please be sure to share that with myself or the Planning Commission members. Let's see, we continued discussions on auxiliary dwelling units. That work is slightly delayed due to the amount of time we spent on the Wendell Woods development, so that will continue in December. And we reviewed a draft ordinance change to allow the increase in the repair and buffers, so as you guys have heard already this evening. So, with that, our next Planning Commission meeting is December 6 at 6:30 in this room, and so all of council and the community are welcome to attend. Thanks.
Are there any questions, Alicia? All right, let's go on to item 5C, which is the T K Forever Foundation, Heather.
So, T K Forever did not have a quorum, so they did not meet this past month, so I have no new updates to share, other than one last final plug to buy your brick, buy your bench. I know they just, the community came together last week to buy a bench for Hampton Davis, which is the little boy that tragically passed away last year. So, his bench will be in Catawba Park as well, so that's a great way to memorialize somebody, or if there's a business that wants to, you know, participate in that, we'd love to, we'd love to have you. That's it.
Thank you, Heather. Next is item 6. We will wait for the Planning Commission recommendation. I guess they're not finished yet, so we'll take about a five-minute break, wait for
Mayor, you can, you can move down and do the, you can amend if you'd like. The only two items that you cannot take action on before the recommendation are going to be item 6B and item 7A. So, you, if you want to have a motion to delay those until such time that the Planning Commission come back, you could go ahead forward with item 6C and then 7B down through, and then once the Planning Commission returns with their recommendation, you can pick back up and hear their recommendation as well as cover against item 6B.
How about if we just go to 7B? Leave 6 out altogether? Okay, I have a motion to...
Mr. Mayor, members of council, a motion to amend the agenda and move to item 7B.
Do I have a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we're going to just go to 7B. We'll go all the way down to F, and then we'll come back up to A. Okay, 7B. All right, 7B. This is a consideration of an encroachment agreement for 50, 5001 Territ Drive. The owner of 500, the owner of 5001 Territ Drive have requested an encroachment for an area adjacent to their backyard in order to install a fence and landscaping. The previous owners maintained the proposed encroachment area for many years as the landscaped area of what they believed was their backyard. This area backs up to the green on hole number one, but this encroachment will not affect golf, maintenance, or play in any way. Are there any questions?
I have two really quick questions. The first question is, looking at the property boundaries, did they currently have an easement for the sidewalk that goes through that corner?
Yes, that got worked out when that sidewalk was installed by S A D O T.
Okay, cool. And then just a quick second question. Will only, will they only be allowed for fencing and landscaping?
Per the enclosed encroachment agreement? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, cool. That's it.
Any other questions, comments? I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the encroachment agreement for 5001 Territ Drive and authorize the city manager to sign said agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any final questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Item 5C.
Whoop, 7C.
I'm sorry, 7C is a bid award for bypass pump for lift station. As part of the budget process, our utility department requested to purchase necessary bypass pumps to be used at sewer lift stations. This was put out for bid in compliance with our purchasing ordinance. The pumps are related and related equipment will be purchased using utility impact fees and will not impact the operational budget. I like impact fees. Do I have any comments or questions? How about a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to award the bid for bypass pumps to Xylem in an amount not to exceed $80,000 and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. 7D. We should, yes, lift station, the O'Neal Lift Station. And the Gus Machunas Sewers Treatment Plant. All right, let's go to 7D. Bid award for Parks and Recreation Office Parking Lot Paving. During the budget process, council approved to pave the Parks and Recreation Building parking lot to include a connection to City Hall parking lot. Staff put the project out for bid in accordance with the purchasing ordinance, and Eddie Smith and Sons located in Fort Mill was the lowest qualified and responsible bidder. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to award the bid for the paving, for the paving of the Parks and Recs, Recreation Parking Lot and the connection to City Hall Parking Lot to Eddie and Sons paving in an amount not to exceed $56,000 and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Let's go to 7E, which is a bid award for pool management contract at the Beach and Swim Center. During the budget process, council approved the Beach and Swim Center budget to include pool management services. Staff put the prod, put the project out for bid in accordance with the purchasing ordinance, and Trident Pool Management located in Charlotte was the lowest qualified and responsible bidder. Are there any comments or questions on this?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor. So Trident has been our pool contract for the last several years, ever since I've been on council. I spend a good portion of my May through mid-July, usually that's when it tapers off, fielding comments and concerns about the contract, not the contract, but what they're getting, what the members are getting at the pool. And so, you know, some of those are valid concerns, which I would bring to city staff. Some of them I could address and dismiss, but I am hesitant to award a contract to Trident with the amount of feedback that I've received from residents over the past few years. I realize that there are a couple other bids. They are a little, a little bit higher, but I hesitate, like I said, to, for any company, any organization, any person, if you don't do a good job, you shouldn't be rewarded with a contract. And so, I think there will be some backlash once people, if people hear that Trident is re- awarded the contract. So, my suggestion would be to go with another bid or to rebid the contract altogether. That's just my feedback.
Thank you.
I agree. I've gotten 30 calls a year, probably. It's one thing to, to award the lowest bidder to a construction project, but when you're talking about a maintenance project to reward subpar performance, in my opinion as well, I, I think we look elsewhere.
Quick question. What, what did we do for solicitation of the, of bid responses?
As far as how do we advertise it? Through Skibo on the city's website, on the Facebook page, and in the newspaper as per our procurement ordinance. There was one other bid that did come in, but it was disqualified because they did not follow the instructions of the bid. So, we did not, that was not included in what you got. So, we got four that came in. We got complaints for years on the prior pool management company. People were armed with pitchforks and torches, one of them gone. And then Trident, which had a previous, had a different name at the time, they have been on one-year deals. There's been some good years. There's been some years that were not so good. This past year was extremely difficult from a staffing perspective. After talking with other pools, other municipalities that had pools, they were all running into a lot of the same things with different companies as well, just being able to actually hire people. Not all, but a number that we talked to. So, have there been complaints? Yes, there have been complaints about the pool manager, pool management company since the day Newland turned over that pool to the city. But if it's council direction to go with the, the next one, or if y'all would like us to bring in all three to do interviews and have, you know, eight or two members of council present, we will be more than happy to line those up. Just tell us which direction y'all would like to go.
So, let me just ask, if we fail to make a motion on this and it just goes on the next, it goes out completely for rebidding, or it goes to the next bidder in line?
If y'all don't make a motion at all tonight, we have to bring it back in December.
Sorry, I said?
We'd have to bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay, so if we go no, then they're disqualified for how long?
If you vote no to Trident, then we're going to need direction on what you would like to do next.
Okay, that makes sense to me. So, we have to make a motion.
What, what would be staff's recommendation if we chose not to go with Trident based on the other two bidders? From the conversation that you and I had, you said that both of them, I believe, are out-of-state companies. So, that makes me a little nervous.
Like North Carolina out-of-state, or like?
One's in Atlanta and one is...
One's in Atlanta. The other has a D B A as being local, but they are from out-of-state. I do not believe it is a Charlotte, North Carolina business, though. The other bidder that was disqualified was Carolina Pool Management. They are headquartered in Charlotte, and they have been our previous pool management provider.
Can I, excuse me, can I ask? Blessedly, I haven't been inundated with complaints. I mean, were they mostly related to the lifeguard or lack thereof, or was it cleanliness? Or, I mean, what, what was it? Because I...
Yes, I would say yes.
All of the above.
I would say yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it, I don't, I often wonder why there are adults involved in that business because they're relying on teenagers to make their business successful. Sometimes they just don't show up, and sometimes when they do show up, they're not really there, if that makes sense. What would staff's recommendation be? We have a good working relationship with Trident. They are somewhat of a known entity compared to the other two. I think if there are specific things that you want to make sure that are addressed, we capture those in the contract with them before it is executed. Happy to set up a meeting. I know, Ms. Overman, 100%, you probably get as many, if not more, calls than what staff gets. You know, folks complaining about their experience at the pool. If you would like to be part of that conversation or give us your list, happy to move forward.
Can we just put it out for rebid?
If that is council's direction to not award and to put it back out for bid, then we will do so. You'll probably get those same three, and my guess would be C P M would actually do theirs correctly. Let's go around, and you'll probably end up with four. There's not many of these companies out there.
Let's do a motion in a second, and we will, and we will do what we need to do, and then we'll put it out for rebid.
Could we maybe extend the, like, you know, I know that there's a lot, a lot of pools up in, in Charlotte, maybe like doing some targeted research and outreach?
C P M and Trident have the majority of them.
Okay. Well, I, I know of one in particular that maybe I can give you their information. You could reach out to them and see if they could bid.
Sure. We can absolutely put it out to them. That's what council wants us to do. The current contract expires December 31st.
I know we're getting in a time crunch, especially as we go into next year.
I would request that council, that allow us to shorten the bid period somewhat so that we can have it teed up in time to bring back to y'all at the December meeting.
What kind of pool activities are there between January?
None, but they've got, they've got pump maintenance stuff that they still have to come in and do. You know, the bathrooms and things like that are on our staff at this point, but they still have weekly checks that they're doing on the pumps and stuff like that, winterizing and things of that nature. And then come January, we literally have nobody. So, would like to maybe, since we're doing a rebid, maybe we push that out for two weeks?
Sure.
If that is okay with council?
By letting everybody else who bid before rebid, and you've got some...
And if Mustache can, if he'll send us that contact.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to rebid the pool contract.
Second.
I have a, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so that's all you need is just rebid, or do we need to turn this one down? That's good enough?
That, that motion works, and we'll, we'll get that out for a minimum of two weeks.
Wonderful.
Turn around time and get it teed back up to bring back to you in December.
I think it's valid.
Yep, I think it is. Since I've never heard any complaints about the pool, but they obviously go to somebody who goes to the pool, so.
Yeah, nobody's going to be on the pool, guys. Somebody has to join the pool. Gus, can you stand at your dock and just like look over there? Yeah.
I get all the other complaints.
Soon enough, you could walk over.
Oh.
Very good. Yeah. Go below.
All right, let's do...
If we had that kayak rack, we could...
Truth. Oh, yeah, we'll have to talk about the kayak rack in council comments. I don't know, we're going to find out. Let's go to 7F. I noticed we have a blank on the executive summary. Is there, is there a number for that to be filled in?
For 7F, it is Truist Bank at 1.45%. Which is basically free money.
All right.
That's, that's pretty darn good.
How do they make any money from that? All right, let's go to 7F. This is consideration of a resolution of purchase equipment and vehicles for police, parks, recreation, public works of stormwater. Resolution being considered is acquired by the lending institutions. The financing was put out to bid, and 1.45% offered the most favorable terms to the city. This will allow the city to move forward with the purchase of two replacement patrol cars with T K Police Department, two new maintenance trucks for the Parks and Recreation, and a front-end loader, dump truck, and additional leaf vac truck for Public Works. Let's hear it for the leaf vacs. All of these items were identified and discussed during our budget workshop and budget presentations.
Absolutely. Motion to approve the resolution to purchase equipment and vehicles for police, parks, and recreation, and Public Works Stormwater.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions before we vote? See none? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. That takes us through F. Is the Planning Commission ready to come back in yet?
It does not appear so, sir.
Did they run home? I think they all ran home.
If we, if you, if you don't mind, Mayor, if we can go back to item 6C, the second reading of the business license ordinance?
All right, let's go to 6C. Let me get my computer set up. Get back to 6C. All right, 6C. This is the second reading of an ordinance to adopt a revised business license ordinance in accordance with the Business License Standardization Act, Act, 2020 Act Number 176. The General Assembly of South Carolina adopted the Business License Standardization Act in 2020, which mandated that all local governments must come into compliance by January 1, 2022. The ordinance before council tonight is the model ordinance provided by the Municipal Association, and its adoption is a requirement by the state. This is the second and final reading. Are there any questions or comments? Since we've already done this once, right? This is the second reading? All right.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to repeal and replace the city's current business license code sections with the updated model provided by the Municipal Association in accordance with the Business License Standardization Act.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any final questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. I think they've gone.
City manager.
Smart. They ran.
All right, we'll take, if anybody needs to go to the facilities for five minutes? Nope, nobody wants to go? Oh, there they go. This is their time to break for it. There's a break.
Mayor, if you'd like, so we, we keep going, I can go ahead and do my city manager's report at that point.
I want to deprive all these people of the city manager's report that just left.
Until planning comes back.
All right, let's go to the city manager. Oh, they're coming. Good, because I didn't want anybody to miss the city manager's report. That's what everybody comes here for.
I think they'll all scurry off before I start, Mayor.
It is your time. Back to you, Chris Leonard.
All right. Let me get my notes here. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, for item... So, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, for item six A, the first item, which would be a proposed revision to the subdivision and land development code, section 1202 dot 2 to include repair and buffer requirements and to amend section 1306 regarding open space requirements. The planning commission voted to recommend that we do accept the ordinance changes as presented here tonight, which specifically includes keeping commercial open space requirements at 25%, which I don't think is specifically noted in people's packets.
Uh, just, Mayor, when we get to that section, I know Chairman Leonard has another recommendation. Whoever makes that recommendation on the land development code, just make that as part of your motion, that the commercial, uh, open space remain at 25%. Just to capture that in your motion when we get to that part, sir.
You got that, Alicia?
All right, Chris.
Okay. Uh, and the, the second item, uh, which was to consider a rezoning recommendation for tax map 654 dash 00 dash 00 dash 026 from AGC in the county to PDD in the city as part of a 100% annexation petition. The planning commission voted that we recommend deferring that rezoning recommendation for two specific items. We need to look at townhouse density and we need to look at the design criteria for the multi-use trail.
Okay, I accept that, thank you.
Very interesting.
Thank you, Chris. Now we're on, back to six B, correct? City manager? All right, let's go to unfinished business for six B. This is the recommendation of first reading of an amendment to ordinance 50 land development code. Okay, catch me if I miss one here, cause this, okay. Recommendation regarding potential amendments to stormwater regulation and subdivision and land development code were presented to council in September. As a result of discussion at that meeting, staff is proposing amendments to the subdivision and land development code, section 1202 dash two, or dot two, to include repair and buffer requirements and to amend section 1306 regarding open space requirements. Did I get that right?
I think so.
How about that? My reading skills are waning a little bit. Are there any questions or comments?
I have one small comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so looking at the first page, there's just one, um, one edits to that last sentence on the second paragraph. It says, "The remaining 20 feet of the buffer shall permit minimal disturbance to all the installation of trials and habitat viewing areas." I'd like to change that to trails versus trials.
We will absolutely get that corrected before the final read, yes, ma'am.
And with that, I, that's my only comment.
Any other comments or questions? Do I have a mo- motion, please?
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance 50 subdivision and land development code, sections 1202 point two and 1306 with the addition of the change to the commercial open space to remain at 25%.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, as, as Alicia pointed out, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. All right, let's go to item six C. If I may make a, make a motion in light of planning commission's desire to have a little more time to, to do this, since I trust your opinions greatly, I would like to make a motion to table item six C for another date.
Seven A.
I'm sorry, seven A. I'd like to make a motion to table item seven A to a future date.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Three noes? Okay, so we going with it. All right, let's go with seven A.
Yep.
I don't think.
They've, it, it failed to table.
The tabling failed.
Three to two failed, failed to table.
Two to three.
Yep. For the record, Mayor, uh, if you can call out the, uh, the votes, just so we capture it accurately.
All right, um, myself and Alicia voted for and the, and Ryan, Gus, and Heather against. So we're going to seven A.
Motion failed to table, correct?
Motion failed.
Point of clarification, are we able to consider this with a, without a planning commission recommendation either way?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, seven A, introduction of a first reading of an ordinance to annex TMS 654 dash 00 dash 00 dash 026 and rezone from AGC in the county to PDD in the city as part of a 100% annexation petition. The application is proposing to annex and rezone approximately 52.7 acres along Dam and Gardendale Roads as a planned development district. Uses proposed within the PDD are a mix of residential uses, including single-family detached and attached, as well as 40,000 square feet of neighborhood scale commercial B1. In addition, the applicant has elected to provide as one of the recreational amenities, a paved multi-use trail from the edge of development adjacent to Gold Hill Middle School and along Gardendale Road to Gladiolaway.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to annex TMS 654 dash 00 dash 00 dash 026 and rezone from AGC in the county to PDD in the city as part of a 100% annexation petition.
If you could also include in your motion a reduction.
And a reduction in the amount of townhomes from 140, density from 145 to 138.
I don't think we know what anything we're talking about here. But I was gonna call for some comments and some questions first, but that's fine. Do we have any comments or questions? We haven't got a second yet, so. All right, now, is there any comments or questions?
I would like to comment. You know, as, as we, as we look at this, we've gotten the density reduced from 145 to 138. This property is already right smack dab right in the middle of TK. Uh, it's a doughnut hole, as the term was used prior. It's already in the city. It will be developed. If we control the development, we can control a lot more about it. If it gets developed with the county's permission, then just like with Braden, we will provide, the police will provide fire with no benefit whatsoever. The immediate impact, if this gets done, will be approximately $2 million in fees to the city, plus approximately $200,000 in sustainable annual income from taxes. I've met with the family and saw their vision for the property. They did have lots of other offers on it, um, with some inferior products to be built. And rather than take more money, um, or take a, a significantly larger offer, they chose to, to find something that they thought would fit with the city and fit with the vision and fit with the legacy of their family. And that means something to me. They also, I mean, there's been talk tonight about the, uh, the, the density. Very doubtful that 138 homes are gonna be built there based on the topo to begin with. Um, the size of the lots right now are set up to be larger than the ones in Lakewood, which is adjoining community. And the connectivity is promised. Uh, you know, part of the vision, part of our comprehensive plan has been the connectivity of the city. You know, we as a council voted to, to connect the trail from Stonecrest over into Lake Shore. They have promised to connect all the other areas that they're adjacent to, to connect their trails to their. They're gonna build those trails, um, and they're gonna get it connected to Catawba Park. This is what I mean, this is one of the biggest things that comes out. Everybody, um, anybody talks about the vision for TK or our comp plan, everybody talks about connectivity. This gives us that connectivity. So that's why I've made the motion.
I appreciate you talked to the owners, I think that's very good. Have you ever talked to the, the voters, to talk to the peoples of TK? See what they've thought? And you, you're having a lot of moans out there. I don't know, I was just wondering if you talked to? You have talked to people of TK?
Did you, did you hear, did you hear the public, excuse me?
I did.
Did you hear the public comments today?
I did, but I've got a lot of comments that were way more than one or two. But okay. The, uh, the trails, um, our current trails along TK Drive, what's, what's the width of those?
Eight feet, sir.
They're eight feet right now?
That is correct.
Any other questions or comments?
I've got comments. Is anyone else gonna go? Do you have comments?
I, I was simple. Deeper lights, tree buffers, trails, one mil plus and impact fees, 500 K to Catawba Park, one-time revenue of two mil plus. It's the right decision for the city.
Uh, okay, good evening, thank you. Uh, so, uh, as Ali is on to the planning commission, I, I wanna just thank, first of all, planning commission for all the work that they did on this because I know that we spent a lot of time debating this and I have a lot of, um, respect for their decision and, and then having enough time to properly vet this. So, um, thank you for the time that you have spent on it and for your recommendation. I wanna also say thank you to the Pattersons and the Windells. I appreciate that you guys have had, um, had this property for so long, in addition to so much throughout our community. And I think the property that we are here on today wouldn't be here if it weren't for the sale from your family. So thank you for all your contributions and also your thoughtful approach to making sure that the development that is presented to us is a quality development. That means a lot. I wanna just say to Shay Holmes, thank you for, um, making some attempts to do public outreach and engagement. I do appreciate you doing that, even though it wasn't a requirement. There's still though, in my opinion, some things that, um, that are not settled that I would like to just point out. And, and I guess before I even get there, I wanna say I like this development. I think it's, it makes sense. I'm not in a disagreement with the other members of council up here who want it to move forward. I just wanna make sure that everything, that, that everyone has the proper time to vet, vet this. And I feel like it's been very fast and there's still questions out there. And I wanna be respectful to, to the planning commission and this council to make sure that everyone has enough time to, to get through it. And properly vet the concerns that they have. So that's my real big driver. I also feel like I've been provided some misinformation, so I know that one thing that, um, when I originally met with the, the developer, I had mentioned specifically to Shay, um, the, the connection, the eight-foot wide connecting multi-use trail. Love that idea, super supportive of, of connectivity and making sure that we're taking steps to complete our bike and pedestrian plan. But one thing I wanna make sure is, uh, that as we are thinking about our community as a golf course, a golf cart community, right? A recreational community, that any new infrastructure that we're installing can meet the needs of our community. And at eight feet wide, although it is the same as our trail, um, I still feel like it's too tight. So I had requested that this trail be increased to a 10-foot wide trail so that it can accommodate safely someone who's driving on that trail with a golf cart and someone who might be jogging or riding their bike going the other direction. That was one of the pieces of feedback I've had. I was told that Duke Energy does not allow for anything greater than eight feet wide and that, um, is inaccurate. Duke Energy does allow for up to 12 feet within their transmission right-of-way. This was confirmed with me today by Duke Energy and just to clarify, I do work for Duke Energy. So I, uh, so they're not hiding that or anything like that. And, and so I, I feel like it's possible for us to extend that, make it more usable, make it safe for our kids because the whole point in that trail is to get, is to get people, right, from being able to go from their home safely back to the middle school. My other concern there is that once we build this, this trail, um, what comes next? Cause it doesn't quite get us all the way to the middle school, so who's gonna complete that next phase of it? Have we spoken with the school? Do we know if the school is interested? Are they gonna do it? Are we gonna do it? Cause, cause connectivity is important and we wanna, of course, increase our bikes, bike and ped pathways. But if it's not all the way there, it really doesn't get us anywhere. So that was one of my concerns as well. It's great, but it just ends and then you, you don't quite get to your destination still. The other thing, I thought that I was going to see, I, I believe that at the planning commission meeting, we did talk about the lots being, um, increased to an 8,000 square foot, um, size. And I saw that in the PDD it was only 7,000 square foot. So I was, had some questioning in terms of why it wasn't increased all the way to that 8,000 square feet, like I believe Lakewood was the one that we used as an example there. Let's see, the other concern I have is just given some of the feedback that we received, again, I guess similar to what planning commission said regarding the number of townhomes and just making sure that there is something that limits, um, the number of townhomes versus single-family. And I know that the, the PDD says, I think it says a mixed amount, but it doesn't specify specifically. Okay, okay, well then that, that point has been fixed. So 52, what, still does seem kind of high, actually. Regardless, there's also some concerns I have in terms of the setbacks that the, the townhomes have and making sure that, um, there's more room actually in, in the public right-of-way. The, the townhomes themselves has been shifted more on the north side of that property. It looks like the topography is, is similar if you go back. So pushing those townhomes back was something that, um, I was interested in seeing as well. I know that at the planning commission, I did talk about several additional items that I'll just mention again. Um, one of the thing, one of the things I mentioned to city staff in addition to during the planning, uh, commission meeting was a need for really getting a sense of what Fort Mill, Fort Mill School District thought about this development and if they were supportive of it as well. I know that not only is it important for us, and I think we recognize this as a council, to make sure that we're coordinating and collaborating with our jurisdictional partners or, and neighbors within our community. And so reaching out to Fort Mill when we have a new development to find out, can our schools take the number of kids that are coming? Because if they can't, what does that do to the quality of education that our students are, or these students would be receiving if our classrooms are full? Right, or, or staff is overwhelmed? So that was just a concern. I wanted us to reach out to Fort Mill School District. I got confirmation today, um, from the superintendent that they still had not been contacted by the city of TK about this development. Um, I also mentioned the need to hold, uh, a public open house with more people. I, again, I recognize that Shay did have two open houses, one a virtual one. At the last planning commission, uh, planning commission specifically asked, and, and I confirmed this, that we wanted an invite to the in-person open house so that we could actually go to the in-person open house and hear what feedback people had about the development. And, um, and that public meeting was held without, um, our awareness, nor were we invited or, um, did we have the opportunity to listen to the feedback that was provided? I recognize that Shay did provide a write-up, but that write-up now is one-sided because no one else from the city was there, no one else, no one from the planning commission was there to get or listen to what the other side was. So again, that's just, there's like this, uh, what is it? There's just continually like lack of information or just not getting all or quite the information circulated in the right way has, has left me, um, wondering what's, why, I guess. I, I do wanna know, and, and this is something, again, I mentioned at the planning commission, given that, that small strip of land that is in between those housing developments, both Cadence and Lakewood, I know that there is a lot of wildlife in between that area. Someone actually spoke about this at the planning commission meeting too, but that's just something that I wanna mention. What happens to all those, you know, we know that we've got a, a deer issue, we know we've, we've had coyote issues. What happens to that wildlife when all that? And, and how is the city planning to manage that wildlife as the, as that area gets cleared? Let's see, construction noise, again, was a concern of mine. I don't know, I don't think that I saw that that part was changed in the PDD. Charlie, was that part updated? I think the last version.
Zone, that, the noise construction is not part of zoning. That is actually in the law enforcement ordinance of the city.
But I believe it's referenced. I thought I saw it referenced in the, somewhere. No, okay. Well anyways, one of my concerns was, I'll just share that, um, given that this particular parcel is next to two residential developments, I wanted us to find some way to put some sort of restrictions around, um, the time of construction so that the homes, of course, the north and the south, wouldn't have to listen to construction noise beeping, um, pretty much Monday through Friday, Monday through Saturday for two years straight. And I know that will be an issue. And so I was hoping that instead of having sun up to sundown as their ability to build, that perhaps we could give, um, those residents nearby a little bit of a break there and put some parameters around that. Um, I know that the property owners still don't have a, a, a plan, or maybe they do now, for the commercial area, so that was just a concern. I know that one thing that we keep hearing over and over on this council is the need for additional commercial. And I just had some concerns over making sure that, um, that this property is used that way and it, and we do get to see some residential development here and it's not all just residential. I do, I, I also have a concern over the traffic impact study and how that happens after the fact. There's no ways for us to know what, what the impact of traffic is gonna be. And I know Dam Road and Gardendale are not city roads, they are state roads, I get it. But that still impacts our people trying to get to their homes and to work and play safely. So without knowing what that traffic impact is, without having a plan for expanding, um, Dam. that traffic impact is, without having a plan for expanding Dam Road and Gardendale, it's, it makes me, you know, wonder what that impact is going to be for people living back there, which is a concern. So I think just a combination, again, sorry I had to go through this whole list, but a combination of, of a lot of these things has just left me with some unanswered answers and some uneasy, are we ready? I'm not ready. I wish that we could slow this down a little bit, make sure that we can get some of these things worked out before we move forward. But again, I'll just close with saying, I think it's a good development. I, I like the intent of it. I just think there's a couple of things that I still wanted to, time to get worked out that haven't. So with that, those are my comments.
I don't know if it's a good development or not. I rely on my planning commission to tell me that and they don't have enough information yet. I don't know what the rush is, why we got to speed this up so fast. Just doesn't make any sense to me, but I'm just, the mayor, I'm just getting one vote, just like everybody else does. I, I do, I am concerned about the density. I think it's a little, little more dense than what I would have preferred. And, and I also worry about the accountability here. We've got three members of this council that are walking away from here and they're not going to be accountable. I mean, we should let the, let the new people be accountable to, to you people. Man, I just don't feel we've got that right now with the, with this vote coming up. But other than that, that's, that's my piece. I just think we're just moving awfully fast with this. Sorry to hear it's all about the money. It didn't used to be.
I don't think that's quite right.
Uh, thank you, but you're out of line right now. If we, if we did let the county do this, the county's not going to change their, their density. It's one, it's one house per acre, just like it is over in West, uh, West Area Meadows next to the church. That came to us five years ago at thirty-something houses. And then later when the, this council came, it's twenty-something houses, I believe. And we turned them down both times. Now they're doing what, seven houses over there? Seven houses in that area? Million-dollar homes. If you're worried about not, you know, the, what's it called? The, with the police having to go over there versus the fire, we have the mutual aid agreement. Obviously, if there's a fire going on, we help all of our neighbors. Yes, we would go to there, but if it's, if there was a, an emergency, a police emergency, we would go over there just like they come and help us. But if it's just routine stuff, we don't, we don't service them. We only go in emergencies only. If you recall, the house on Windhaven, uh, Wind, what's the street in front of Brundy Park? Windward. I just drive down it every day. There was a house that burned on Windward a while back. Riverview was the first respondent in that. That's mutual aid. We all help each other. So, but if there was just some kind of inspection or something to do, we wouldn't have to do that. And they would still have to buy water from us, even if it was the county at a very exorbitant amount. But that's neither here nor there. I think, I think we all know what we're talking about here. So with that, are there any other questions or comments? None? Here are none. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No. No.
Was that a aye or a no?
It was a no.
Okay. You got that? Three to?
An aye for now.
All right. Next is item eight, city manager's report. Charlie Fundeburton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'd like to start off my city manager's report by recognizing a new member of our family. Chief Joey Crosby is here with us tonight. Joe, if you wouldn't, chief, would you mind standing? Welcome to the team. As, as sad as we were to, to see Chief, Chief Parker go, we're equally as excited to, to welcome Chief Crosby to the team. Mayor swore him in this morning. Day was his first day and he's still here. I'll report if he shows up tomorrow morning. So we're, we're very, very thankful to have him joining us. And we, just as a reminder, we'll have a, a small reception across the hallway for him as soon as we conclude here. Next week is our Thanksgiving holidays. So happy Thanksgiving in advance to everyone. City offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday for the holidays. December fourth is our tree lighting and that will be here before we know it, our annual tree lighting. Santa will be in attendance, but Santa's not real comfortable with all the kids sitting on the laps. So we've got some, some other things planned. Katie, Katie B's done a great job. I think there's going to be a station set up for cookies and hot cocoa as well as writing letters to Santa and getting them in the magic mailbox so they can, uh, get off to the North Pole. So we're excited about that. Got a lot of activities coming up in December. If you're not signed up to, to get alerts from our calendar, if you're not looking at our website or our social media, do so. We've got a whole host of events over the first couple of weeks of December there, including our annual tree lighting for the, or excuse me, our Christmas light tour that the police department puts on. Our fire department still has their good contacts with Santa and they give him a ride around town just before Christmas so he can check that list again. So love to see everybody coming out this year for, for all those events. One new event, council, Mayor Pro Tim Machunas mentioned previously, but we are hosting our first ever Christmas tree decorating contest during this year's annual tree lighting on Saturday the fourth. Registration is free to participate and it's open now through November thirtieth. Contest rules and guidelines do apply and see the website for all that information. I think we've already got three or four and those trees are going to be set up in the lower level of Glenon Center. And we're asking for donations to be able to vote and those donations are going to help some great charities. So new, new little addition to our, all of our holiday festivities. We're excited to, to get those going. 'Tis the season. So, Mr. Mayor and council, I think enough words have been said tonight. So I'll turn this back over to you, sir.
I just have one question.
Yes.
The crosswalk.
Crosswalk works. It's lighted. We've did a little, little video.
Prayers have been answered. I said before I leave, we get that, it only took three years, four months, thirteen days.
Yes, sir. Unreal. And what was the final cost, the total cost? I'm ashamed to even say, sir, but I don't have that number with me. It was, it was a, it was a hefty price tag.
Around sixty?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's.
But we only paid twenty percent or so?
We paid twenty percent. Yes, sir. Thanks to our friends at Federal House.
People are always talking about, can we get more crosswalks like that all over the place? Sixty thousand each and it takes three years to do it? Now, yes, we had some COVID issues, but good lord. You see, when they finally got to it, it took two days?
Um, once it finally got around to it, they, they knocked it out pretty quickly. Yes, sir. I do want to let you know that the crosswalk on Shoreline Parkway, where all the kids cross coming out of Trailhead and moving over to the Memorial Garden, we are going to be installing rapid flash beacons on those here pretty soon. So parts been ordered, be coming in. And then we'll be working with DOT on lighting up, getting encroachment permits to light up at least Windjammer. That's, that's a pretty hairy one there.
At least two Windjammer or at least Windjammer?
At least Windjammer. So doing, doing Shoreline Parkway and then trying to at least get Windjammer done this fiscal year. So, but we do have Shoreline. That one is en route on the way. I've been told that it is not in one of those container ships in the ocean. So we should have it here pretty soon. And as soon as we do, staff will get that installed.
And don't forget going across the apartments. We hear about that all the time. And I, I played tag with some of those kids going by between the two apartments on.
That's actually not a crosswalk there. There's not a crosswalk.
That's what I'm saying. We need some kind of a crosswalk there.
I don't believe we can put a crosswalk there because of its proximity to the intersection. They actually need to go up to the roundabout and use those crosswalks based on the distance.
Bet we can when somebody gets hit.
That was, that was looked at heavily when the, when DOT designed, or the county designed that. Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions for Charlie? All right, let's go to council comments. We'll start with Ryan.
Um, as usual, guys, first responders, police, fire. Thanks for all you do. It's greatly appreciated. You guys do a great job for the city. Keep that up. Congrats to the new police chief. You have big shoes to fill. And from what I hear, there's no doubt you have the ability to do that. So thanks for coming over. Welcome to the family. Congrats to these guys here, Chris, Tom, and Scott on your election last month. We look forward to having you on this council in January. Great job, guys. Good for you. And that's all I got.
Alicia?
Wow, ditto. Councilmember Richard said. So thanks, thanks to everyone and congrats and congrats and that's it. Thanks.
Hillary?
Three for three, ditto. Congrats and welcome. Congrats to the three of you. I know you represent the city well and we're excited to have you. Go ahead, Gus.
Gus?
Welcome, welcome, chief. Look forward to meeting you here in just a few minutes. Congrats to you guys over there. Look forward to working you and another, with, and working with you in another couple of months. Want to give a shout out to Sarah Ruffalo, one of the members of the E D C for seeing through the Christmas tree contest idea. That's really cool. Thanksgiving is coming up. As residents of Tika K, we have an awful lot to be thankful for and let's, don't forget that. And lastly, I'm going to enjoy the Arbor Day tree planting in Dale Watts' memory. Dale did an awful lot for this city. Wish we could do more, but having a tree, a tree planted for you is pretty doggone good. So that's going to be a special moment. Thank you.
Well, you're getting a sewage treatment plant, so.
Just, I'd like to say welcome, chief. It was a pleasure and an honor to swear you in today. I heard somebody call you Chief Joey. Is that what you're going to go by? Be, be careful what you ask for because that's a, that's something that, that will stick in people's mind. I heard Chief Joey and I'm always thinking, oh, here's, so it looks like it's Chief Joey then is what it's going to be called. I'd like to thank everybody who ran for, for the council. I know it's, it's very tough to do that, put yourself out there and get everything said about you. But I can, I can confirm now, it is safe to turn on your computer. Go ahead and do that without getting all this all riled up about stuff. The elections are over. Congratulations to the, are all three of you over there? Yeah, all three of you are over there. Congratulations. And I can't wait for you to take this over. Be careful what you ask for. And with it, with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.